One bit of information that our engineer has requested and probably received by this point, but it was just something that they needed to have in their file on a calculation. It was deemed by the subdivision review committee to have complied with our code in those respects, and we were ready to move it forward for the approval of the preliminary plat. The subdivision review committee is the authority that will ultimately move this forward, and then they'll start on their final plat process. But in our code, we did choose to require a public hearing. We are allowed by state law to have up to one, as long as it's not the city council doing it. And so the way our code was adapted, the planning commission would have one public hearing on that. So that's what we're here to do tonight. As far as the actual subdivision, we do have Mr. Lance here today. If you have any questions for him that he can answer that comes up in the public hearing or that the planning commission has. I can tell you, in fact, let me just really quickly show you where this is. We tried on the public hearing notice to put pretty good information on the website.
For those of you that are local to Perron, it's right by Stillwater and Maple Springs subdivision. Where that old, old, old barn used to be in tree, and then they chopped it down. So it's right there. If you're familiar with Perron, on 200 South coming in.
So, and it is, the one thing about this, we had several potential developments, kicking some dirt around and coming up with some ideas of what could be done with this property. It was for sale for quite a while before the current property owner bought it, Chris Madsen with All American Builders. And if the council, if the commission remembers, we did do a parcel boundary realignment to align the parcels consistent with our zoning map. So in the front, it's commercial, and in the back, it's residential. There were some ideas about potentially some higher density requests, maybe a PUD by different property owners that were, or potential property owners that were looking at concepts. So when Chris bought the property and brought forward a application for a subdivision, and it was just what I would say homogeneous to the subdivisions surrounding it, just a typical R1 subdivision with single-family residences on quarter-acre lots, give or take. It was, at that point, like I said, it's administrative, but it seemed to fit. I know that there has been some conversation going around that maybe that's not what was gonna be here, but that is what it is. And again, we're looking at the, now we're zoomed in on it. He wants to build single-family homes with RV garages on each one, and there are 27 lots. So that's all of the basic information about the subdivision before a public hearing, and then I can answer any questions, or the representative of the developers here can answer any other questions for the planning commission.
All right, if anybody has any comments, concerns, now is the time. Yep, you can come up to the microphone. Just state your name and your address.
Kylie Wilson. My backyard will border these houses. I was just wondering if there's gonna be like covenants for this neighborhood? If there's gonna be like a fence that's gonna, that the developer's gonna put in between, you know, properties, existing properties, and like the size of the lots? When you first started talking, you said, "single-family or two-family homes"?
No, the single-family or two-family home subdivisions are administrative. This is just a single-family home subdivision.
Oh, okay. That was my question, so.
Perfect, and we can address those down when we go over it. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, anything else from anyone? All right, I'll take a motion to go out of public hearing and into our regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to exit the public hearing and go into the regular meeting.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we'll go into our regular public meeting.
Okay, do you want me to answer some of those questions?
Let's wait until we get to it, on number eight.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So we're on number seven right now. Recommendation to City Council for zoning proposed to Prime West Development Annexation. So I believe they're wanting this rezoned to R2, correct?
Well, what it is, is as we discuss an annexation and an annexation agreement, it's per the city's annexation policy that we assign it a zone. So we're not rezoning, because it's not even in the city.
Oh, yeah, it's just an accounting.
We're just assigning a zone as a part of a development agreement.
And we're proposing R3 for the 300-foot strip adjacent to I-15, and then the remainder of the property will be R2, consistent with the 2012 flume.
So when they were here last time, did you guys have any concerns, questions, that were answered that you might have now?
Does the flume not have R3 planned right there?
Yeah, no, the flume doesn't have it.
No, it does.
It does?
Uh-huh, if you look at the...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how we, that's how we got to this proposition, was I took that old map, scaled it in, and then there was the band of, I think it was brown, up against the freeway.
Yeah.
Then the orange is the medium.
Yeah, so it's these parcels right here, this, what did we call it, baby poop brown color? Is, it's not R3, but it's high-density.
Pull my finger.
And then the orange color is medium-density. And so, I mean, from an administrative perspective, the last time we dealt with one of these, we were dealing with a very complex concept of density restrictions, and density on average, and things like this. This is pretty straightforward, just what the city's general plan is, they're proposing. So, the question is, is the general plan from 2012 still good? And we haven't really discussed changing anything in there, or talking about it much. It's pretty typical, I think, to put your higher-density next to the freeway. We can make all kinds of guesses as to why that had been done typically in the past, but that's what was done with our plan as well.
Thoughts, questions? I think it aligns with the city plan on it. I think the zoning is appropriate with this, so I would like to give a positive recommendation. I can't give a recommendation, I can't give a motion, but you guys can, if that's what you feel like.
I think so.
I just need a motion.
How do you want it worded?
We're just giving a positive recommendation to City Council for the rezoning of R3, of the 300 feet.
Not rezoning?
Not rezoning, sorry. Just following the R3 zone for the 300 feet, and the R2 for the rest of the property.
I'd just say adopt it consistent with the map, that way...
Oh, that works out even better. How about that?
I'm making a motion to adopt the consistency of the map for this project.
We're actually making a positive recommendation to City Council.
Positive recommendation.
That work, Kelly? Okay, can I get a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to number eight, approval of the 1851 subdivision for preliminary plat, preliminary plat.
So let me answer...
Now we can go ahead and ask.
Let me answer some of those questions, and Lance, you probably have, if you wouldn't mind coming up, you may have some additional answers. So again, these are, these are single-family lots. There is not a requirement for fencing. If it was a different, if it was a different density of residential versus residential, or a commercial versus residential, then there's some fencing requirement. In this case, it's just gonna be up to either the developer to decide to enhance their lots with fencing, or individual property owners that may wanna put up a fence. They just need to get a fence permit and do that accordingly. There was another question about the size of lots, and I was trying to look and see if I could see it on here. They're gonna range anywhere from, 10,000 square feet is the minimum. Most of these lots, as you can see across the top, you probably can't see, but 12,300, 10,600, 10,600. You get into the corner lots are a little larger, kinda harder to squeeze in there, 15,000 square feet lot, 14,000 square foot lot. But they all do comply with the minimum requirements. There was a question...
So there were CCNRs. Are you guys having CCNRs? Are you, are you doing CCNRs?
Yes, there will be CCNRs. They, they, they're kind of in process.
And just a comment on that, the city doesn't require CCNRs?
Right.
And that had come up during our subdivision review committee. I think we kind of maybe surprised Chris with that, and we just wondered, are you doing CCNRs? They're not required, but are you doing them? And he kinda was like, "Well, we can, maybe."
That, like I say, it's still, it's still a matter of discussion, but I'll think, I think I will win on that, and yes, we will have CCNRs.
Perfect. And then what about fencing?
Fencing, so if you look, all the dark lines on that plan, and you can see the dark lines going out to the building setback, will all be CMU.
Be what, sir?
Concrete block.
Masonry unit. Mason or block fence.
Concrete block, all concrete block, full perimeter, and between lots, oh, thank you.
But that's a, that's a developer choice to enhance the value. It's not a city requirement.
Yep.
No, I was just going over the questions that was...
No, I'm glad, I'm glad.
Yeah, so, I believe that was it, CCNRs, fencing in light side blocks. And then I had a question, did the water drainage get fixed that we talked about?
So, the water drainage solution, we talked about, they're required to retain their own drainage up to a certain size event, and what they ended up deciding to do was do a sub, underground drainage that would, that would, it is a detention, sorry, it is a retention basin, it just has a limited quantity per code. So the challenge, and of course, the developer was like, "Listen, we're surrounded by these other subdivisions. We're tying in, can we not just do what they did, and just use curb and gutter to deflect the water down to the flood channel?", which is what the other two subdivisions surrounding them have done. And we said, "You know what, the code says that you need to retain your own water to a historical outflow." And so they have planted that. You'll see this green line, there's a, there's a PUE, and they have, this is kind of a new concept, where they, they do storm tech chambers, which basically take water, and it's quite deep, takes water in and sinks the water into the ground. So it will, it will take in the water, sink it into the ground. Of course, a large enough event will then flow through into the rest of the city drainage on its way to the flood channel, which will be, it'll be an enhancement. It's gonna cost them a lot of money, it's more than what the development around was required to do, but it is consistent with our current city code, and was approved by the city engineer, so.
Perfect. And then my next question was, did we get 25-feet setbacks from 1200 West?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. I think those are my two questions I had on that. Did you guys have any questions?
No.
So this is all curb and gutter?
Yep.
The streets are, what they need to be, it's all...
Correct width.
It's all the ordinances in there?
Correct setbacks. Originally, the developer wanted to have a, what, fudge the front setback, and have a variance. The city did not allow that variance, so the houses are placed within those setbacks. And it was, it was basically, you know, they're trying to enhance value by having RV garages on there. Felt like it was quite a, quite an addition. Their streets, do you know, did the streets end up staying a little wider than...
I, I think they were, weren't they?
Yeah, the right way is 60, 60-plus with setbacks and all, so, so, yeah.
But the asphalt, it seems like they were doing a little larger on asphalt?
Yeah.
So that, you know, like an RV could park inside the garage.
Yeah, and that was a huge discussion internally about, related to RV garages, and RV parking and that kind of thing, so.
One other thing to note, we are not approving, at this time, the commercial, future commercial development, although you do see it on the plan, that's just a conceptual plan. At one point, we were talking about potentially sharing storm drain treatment of, between the two properties, and we're happy that they found a way to just take care of this, and then they'll take care of the other when they build that out. So that'll be coming in the future at some point. We'll see.
Probably soon.
Yep, but it's not part of this approval.
Any questions from you guys? All right, well, I think all my questions have been answered. In my opinion, I think the subdivision fits the area that it's located in. It follows all of our ordinances, you're doing everything that we're required to do. So I think it will be beneficial with the homes around it. I think it will make market prices go up to those homes around it, instead of having empty lot. So I like it. You guys, thoughts?
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
All right, I'll take a motion. Yeah, just a positive recommendation again.
No, 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 this is approval of the preliminary plat. It doesn't go anywhere from here.
Oh, goes approval, okay, 'cause it says recommendation to City Council.
Sorry, that's a, that's a...
Oh, that's on private, just kidding, it says approval.
Oh, it does say approval.
I need to read correctly.
Okay.
Okay, so we're approving this. It's Dan's fault, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead.
Do we have a public comment here?
It isn't public comment, but I'll go ahead, if you wanna come to the microphone.
Step up to the mic, please. State your...
I haven't lived adjacent to all the construction that goes on. Are they gonna keep the dust down when they build?
That's part of the, that's part of their, they will have to submit a dust management plan, a traffic management plan, and all of that, yeah.
So, and if you look at, on that top right, there's a square right there that's red. That's a staging area, so that's where all of their stuff should be, so there's not dirt piling up in the road or anything like that, so.
Yeah, well, I just, all the houses were below, and the ones in the cul-de-sac I live in, I mean, literally coated, the dust was this thick, 'cause they didn't water when they were compact, and I was just curious if that was gonna be.
Yeah, that is part of the ordinances, so they have to control that.
We are, we're clamping down on that and trying to do a better job. It is, it is, it is quite a, quite a lot of impact on the neighbors as things get built. At a subdivision level, when they have all of the heavy equipment in there, it's a lot easier to hold them to that dust management. The hard thing is individual, small, little projects where they just pop in and start working, and, you know, anyways. But this, this will have to have a management plan, and we'll enforce that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now I need a motion for approval, if that's what we're deciding.
Make a motion to approve the 1851 subdivision plat?
I second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, aye, have it. All right, moving along, number nine, consideration of conditional use permit for Russell Emery. And you guys have a packet in front of you about that.
So, let me just give a little bit of background, and I'd just like some direction from the planning commission on what you wanna do tonight, how much you wanna do tonight. We got an application roughly a week ago. This was not enough time for us to schedule a public hearing on this. We are required, per our ordinance, to have a public hearing and to notify neighbors within 300 feet adjacent, under our code that was recently put in when Larry was the, was the chair and was wanting to enhance the transparency that the city, when the city does zone changes, when the city approves conditional use permits, and so forth. So we were not able to, there wasn't enough time from the time of the application to schedule the public hearing tonight, but we didn't wanna not put it on the agenda. We got several calls from the applicant wanting to make sure that it was on the agenda. So we can't approve or deny tonight without having a public hearing first, and without notice, doing the required noticing per our code. We can have a discussion. Of course, we're probably gonna, depending on if anybody shows up in the public hearing, probably rehash that discussion again before the public hearing, or as part of the public hearing. So there's a lot of information, there's a lot of stuff to cover. How much, do you want me to give you a shortened, condensed? Or do you want to do it all next time after we've done it?
Yeah, I think we can do a shortened condensed, because next time, we're gonna have to go and detail a little bit more on it, so.
Okay. So...
And this is the property, correct, right here on this?
What's that?
This is the property.
This is the property right here, this is the parcel that the conditional use is being requested for. And in your packet, you have the application. It is an application for conditional use, specifically storage, RV, and truck is what is on there, the nature of the business. We don't have that specifically called out in our table of uses. What we do have is basically storage, which in the, in the, in this zone, the general commercial zone, is a conditional use required in order to allow that type of use. There's a lot of background here. I believe we have Mr. Emery here, and Mr. Cheek, who is on the application, is representing, is representing Emery, I guess. So, just some, some stuff, I have, if you'll, I have a packet with some information. There's a lot of, there's a lot of history here of, as far as trying to, trying to come up with ideas of how we can deal with this property, bring it into compliance, have option to utilize the property by the, by the landowner. Some of my concerns, right out of the gate, I'll just read them. There isn't a business license currently, or an EIN listed on the application. There is a, there's a history of nuisance-like conditions, there's pictures in the packet. And I'm gonna try, I'm gonna stick to facts, things that we've dealt with. I'm hoping that we can come to some sort of a, of a, of a path forward, but you guys need to know, need to know the history. Mr. Emery has been illegally living on site in an RV for decades. A fact that he has always denied until recently, when he admitted that to me, and again, by his attorney, in an attempt to justify a non-conforming status. He argued that since he has been occupying the property in 2004, that our ordinance didn't apply to him when he started living there, since he assumed that our ordinance went into effect in 2016, 'cause that's the date that shows online. That's just the date that it was published online, when we put him online. In reality, we had an ordinance in effect since 2002, which disallowed the process. And so this establishes that he has been living there in violation. The city has concerns about Mr. Emery illegally using the water connection that is there, and potentially illegally dumping sewer, since there has been water present being used with no sewer connection, and nor an approved septic system. Water has been used, even when livestock was not present, for months at a time. He gained that water connection for the purposes of stock watering, but has never had a building permit for any structures or utilities. So there's just been some concern that, that water has been used, there's living going on, therefore, is the water being used for living, and if so, where's the septic? And that's been one of the concerns. Not to mention, that's not what the water was authorized for in the first place. Mr. Emery has attempted to go around city authority to acquire power from Rocky Mountain Power in violation of the city's agreement with Rocky Mountain and our service areas. He paid Rocky Mountain a power development and installation fees, and scheduled a hookup before the city stopped the process. There's a long and storied history of Mr. Emery fighting with the neighbors, and the city has had many, many complaints from multiple parties. While it does take two to fight, he has certainly been involved in many altercations. One involved suspected brandishing of firearms. There have been multiple other altercations involving complaints from suspected harassment from a distance, including suspected taunting, repeatedly shining lights into houses, and suspected trespassing. He has been formally trespassed from the Eagle Rock PUD, of which he was accused of violating. These events have put a strain on law enforcement, and put a high toll on all involved, including the neighbors, law enforcement, the legal system, and even Mr. Emery himself. In some of these events, Mr. Emery has been taken to criminal court by the city. Those cases were all resolved with deals cut with Mr. Emery. And he has been represented himself, he's been represented by Mr. Cheek, Dan Roberts, Platte and Platte Engineering, and his recent attorney, Jim Jensen. Despite negotiating in good faith to find working solution, none of those deals have been honored by Mr. Emery. He has continued to violate the provisions of the agreements, and has continued to be a problem. He is currently in violation of the most recent deal cut a mere weeks ago. He was required to remove the RV trailers, to stop having altercations with the neighbors, and to stop living on the site. I believe the altercations have stopped, and I don't believe he's been living on the site, but one of the two RVs is still located on the property.
Sorry?
The deadline on that was May 12th, and the city's next action is to turn off the, Mr. Emery's water connection again. The only reason we haven't taken that action was due to this application having been filed, and a possible resolution of the issue. One of the city's concerns is that this conditional use permit could be used to give him explicit permission to store RVs on the property, and then to continue illegal living on the site without following building rules, and without obtaining utilities like culinary water power, and most importantly, sewer. So, I wanna clarify that these are matters of fact. I have not included other concerns or speculation that the city or neighbors have in this statement, because they are speculation. The mayor and I receive complaints about this property owner on a monthly basis. Mr. Emery often tells people, including me, that none of this is true, and he is the victim of neighbors harassing him, and that he is a victim of the city being tough on him, despite the fact that he has lived there for 20 years, causing the problems I have enumerated. He has essentially been trying to find a way around our building code and fees. I have assured him many times that if he is willing to play by the rules, that we will work with him, we will issue him a building permit, and we will allow him to use his land. I stand by that statement. In Perron City, we strongly believe in property rights, when the applicant follows the same requirements as everybody else. Therefore, I ask the planning commission to be very judicious in its consideration of the matter today. I would love to find a workable solution that mitigates the issues, and allows him to move forward and use his land, with healthy guardrails in place, and a clear set of expectations should we grant this permit. Unfortunately, given his history, we cannot give Mr. Emery the benefit of doubt, in my opinion, as a zoning administrator. What I'm saying is, I think we need to be more restrictive on the front end, than, than less restrictive, and then tightening the reins if there's problems in the future. So, I'm suggesting some of the following conditions that he would need to meet before we would consider or approve the permit. One, I think that he needs to clean up the site. Two, absolutely no living on the site, and stored RVs by him or his customers. The problem with this is, it's hard to prove. Something we could consider would be hours of operation, limited hours of operation, no utilities plugged into RVs, things like that. We absolutely can't have any harassment of the neighbors, or conflicts with the neighbors. I would suggest that if there's a successful prosecution of a criminal infraction or worse, it would automatically negate the conditional use permit. There is the, there is the requirement of fencing between commercial and residential properties, which we would have to consider. We would obviously need a legitimate business, EIN... Um, we would obviously need an, a legitimate business, EIN, and a building permit before we consider this. And I do, I would, I would think that we would not want to allow for the mixing of commercial and agricultural, uh, uses simultaneously. If we can get to a point where we're ready to permit this, I think that, um, I've, I've enumerated some of those things again. I think that we would need to also make sure that we, um, we specify, even though it's in our code, that no building permits would be issued, um, even small structured, structures unless all city codes are followed and fees paid, and, um, and that includes flood channel easement and improvements. And a discussion of what is to be stored, um, or what would be allowed to be stored. It's pretty vague in the, um, in the request. We're already in kind of a gray area in our code. Um, as far as storage, what are we talking about? Are we talking construction equipment? Are we talking semi-trailers? Are we talking RVs? Are we talking what? And any other conditions that, um, the, the, the commission wanted to, um, put on that would be a, that would be in, in response to an actual, um, potential issue. I'm not, I'm not saying we throw the book at him or anything like that, just that we, we wanna have, um, compliance there. So, that's my rough background, history. You'd, you rarely hear me talk in such, um, frank terms. But it's been three years of, um, dealing with, um, less, less than, than optimal situation out here, so that's my input.
You can put, how I have come up?
We, uh, can appreciate your consideration.
Can you state your name, please, sir?
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Dennis Cheek, and, uh-
That with a C?
Cheek, yeah, like the cheek on your face, or cheek back here, wherever you wanna go. Uh, Mr. Emery's had some issues. I, I can assure you that he's not living there. Uh, I didn't, I wasn't aware that he couldn't store his RV on there, I think, it's zoned properly. Uh, he's just trying to get this straightened out. Uh, the main purpose for doing this is to make it sellable. To make it sellable so he can get his price. And I think with ninety homes going in next door and the homes across the street, that there is r- uh, a need for storage. And I think it, it's a viable place for storage. It's next to the river, uh, it's not very conducive to building, but it would be conducive to storage. And this is the purpose. Uh, he, Mr. Emery is living someplace else, he's not living on the property. He does visit, visit the property, and he has agreed to clean it up and, and get all that stuff moved to the back and make it more appropriate. I don't know if you have any other ques- questions, but, uh, that's the main purpose, is to get this permitted so that we can have a more sellable property. Right now, it's not sellable because of the, the river behind it.
What's it zoned at right now?
It's zoned, it's zoned in general commercial.
So, my question, sorry, my question would be is, do you have any buyers right now that are not wanting to buy it because it's not storage?
I've, I've had, uh, several buyers, but nobody's wanted to take it on, so.
But has that been the direct issue, did they say because, that you couldn't do storage?
That's been one of the issues, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And then you have the-
When you say making it storage to make it sellable, i- is the intention to actually, um, build something?
No, it's to just have storage. RV storage, truck storage, that sort of thing. He's gonna put a little office, storage shed up front, no building.
So, you just said no building?
No, uh, storage building, is that building? I don't know.
If it's a building that's being used for business or for-
Okay.
Using, it would need a building permit, then?
Well, what the propis- uh, what would the, what were, our thoughts were, was get a ten by ten storage just for an office and put it on the corner.
So, I'm a little bit confused. Are you selling the property or are you going to-
We're trying to sell it.
The arborage storage building?
He thinks it'll be more valuable and more marketable if he has a, a business established, a storage business established.
Thank you.
I don't truly believe that.
Oh, you don't believe it?
No.
I don't, I don't believe that as well.
I think a commercial lot is the same value, no matter what.
Well, let me tell you-
Putting a ten by ten building and putting a couple trailers there ain't gonna make it more valuable.
I, I have a four-year degree in, in commercial real estate. I'm a CCIM. I sold millions of dollars worth of real estate, and I feel that it would bring value to this, to his property. Right now, it, by the river, it's pretty hard to sell and build something. You have a fifty-foot ri- uh, ease weight right there. It's just, people don't wanna go and invest and build a big commercial property there next to the river.
Again, will they, if there's a storage, you think?
Harvey?
The river is still gonna be there if it's storage.
Yeah, but it's, it's storage. It's not a building that's gonna get washed away or, or something. I don't think it's gonna happen, but everybody that looks at the property, looks at the drainage ditch and discounts it.
So, I, I have my real estate license currently active here in Iron County. I sell a lot of homes in Iron County. I do commercial, I do residential. Um, I, I, I'm ha- seeing, like, finding it hard to find the value in having it, a conditional use permit put on the property just for the intent of selling it. I think it's zoned commercial, which is already great in itself right there, um, for any business or company. I would rather see, if you guys have a problem selling it and you actually have a buyer that's like, hey, uh, the only reason I'm going to buy this is that you can get it zon- you know, uh, a conditional use of permit, then I would feel like it would be the appropriate time to come back here. But just to say in general that you think you're going to be able to sell the property for more money because you're having this conditional permit for that, I don't agree with.
Could I add something, please?
Yeah.
Uh, forgive me for holding this desk up. Sometimes I have a little trouble with my legs. For those of you that don't know, we might need to drop some, really, and forgive me, Ken.
Yeah, we need you to talk into the mic, 'cause you're being broadcast nationwide.
You can look over there.
The whole world's watching.
No, that's okay. Um, you know, there's been a lot of ugly things said about me, and I don't appreciate it. And I would challenge anybody here today, right now, to go out to my property and show me any sign of any dumping at all, anything. And forgive me for being a little bit upset, but that's really a rude thing to say about somebody. It really is. I don't dump sewage, I don't have a septic, I don't have a sewer. I, you know, without getting into more detail, if I've stayed there from time to time, I have homes, I have family. I'm a father, I'm a grandfather, I'm not a, a monster. There's a handful of people in the HOA that think I am. Well, I'm sorry. Okay, it's, it's my property and I wanna do something with it. And Dennis has been a lot of help. Where'd he go? There he is. It, it's just, you know, a lot of ugly things have been, have been said about me, and that's, that's, that's not cool. Why? Is, is anybody, no one's ever proved that I've trespassed, ever. Before you were here, Dan, I took it all the way-
I used the word suspected.
Well-
These things have gone to court. I just mentioned things, statements of fact, that's all. I didn't say you are a monster.
But you didn't mention the fact that I s- I spent twenty thousand dollars defending myself with Bishop and took it all the way with the past judge and court clerk, and took it all the way to where a jury trial was called in and everything was dropped, everything. I'm not a bad person. I've been labeled.
Thank you.
By Little Town.
Well, thanks for the comment.
What I, what I wanna do with my property, I don't know. Maybe we do wanna put a shop there. But, you know, we wanna do something with it, take it forward, do something, and not be constantly attacked by a handful of less than desirable individuals across the street.
And, and we're here right now just to make sure that you're following the ordinances set in place.
I'm sorry?
We're here right now to make sure that you're following the ordinances that are set in place with the city-
Right.
Since two thousand and two, which you have admittedly violated. Am I able to say something?
To a, to a very small degree.
But you have admittedly violated the ordinances set in place.
No, I haven't admitted that.
I mean, if it's not a small degree or not, is, did you violate it or not?
I don't dump anything on my property. I've owned it for over twenty years.
But that's okay.
That's, that's, I mean, you guys could look, go look right now. Show me where I dumped anything, ever, on that property. Ask Weston, he's my neighbor.
I think-
Do you know of any dumping, Weston, anywhere?
I'm not aware of any dumping, but not down there all the time either.
Yeah.
Do I harass you?
No, I don't think so.
Do I bother you? I mean, you've been a good neighbor, you helped me chase my cows. You know, I've, I've had cows for fifty years, I'm an old guy. And people say, you don't do cows? Okay. I do cows every year. That's what I do.
I think Rochelle had a-
So, Weston, is this property south of your?
I think, before you guys know it, that's Rochelle had a comment she wanted to make. Oh, it's okay. Um, so, in the twenty years that you've owned the property?
Twenty plus, ma'am.
Have you ever had the opportunity to sell it?
I, well, I've sold, well, I originally owned twenty-eight acres. I've sold pieces of it off, yes.
Because it was my understanding somebody's tried to buy it and you wouldn't sell it to them. Am I incorrect in that assumption?
But once, once again, you're perhaps paraphrasing and, and slipping stuff in.
Oh, no, no, no. I am not, I'm just asking.
A lot of people have tried to buy the property over the years.
Okay.
I want fair market value for it. I'll sell it today.
So, I'm just trying to get an understanding, is you want to, um, be able to enhance your property so you're able to sell it?
Well, that, you know-
Like, are you really wanting to sell it?
I'd like to sell it, yeah, but I, I don't wanna get beat up and, and pushed around and, and be offered half of what it's worth.
Okay.
I mean, that's fair, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, do we know what fair market value is?
You're absolutely, you know, worth a fair price on that.
Thank you. I want comp value for the property is what I want.
Perfect.
And, and how, how have you established that number?
Well, the, an acre across the street sold for eighty thousand dollars, so I'm figuring to, yeah, I wanna do some improvements on the property. But I can't do it with constant harassment. And I do have homes, Mr. Jensen, in other states. I do travel. I don't, you make it sound like I'm some type of a, uh-
I just stepped, stepped to the facts, Emery, that's all I did.
Yeah.
I didn't, I don't care about other homes in their places. You've been illegally living there. Let me talk, let me talk. We don't talk over to each other in this meeting. You've, you have your time to talk. Um, it's been non-stop-
That's the first thing I'd have to do.
Problems, non-stop complaints on both sides, admittedly on both sides. You've, you've, you've said that they're all harassing you. Um, you've been living there, you've admitted it to me, your attorney admitted it to our attorney. These are statements on the record. And you've been using-
Can I respond to that?
Hang on, hang on, I'm not done talking. You've been using water, which was a, which was given for the purpose of stock watering only.
Not true.
Okay.
Let me talk, please.
I'm sorry. Hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. Please let me take control. This isn't a meeting for a he-said, she-said argument, right? We're just here to go over the facts. Thank you for, so much for submitting this information.
So, we still have to have a public hearing-
We can't, we can't move and do anything on it until we have a public hearing. And so, in two weeks, can we go ahead and set a public hearing for in two weeks? So, in two weeks, we're going to set a public hearing where we're gonna give the public a chance to talk. You can totally be present and get up and use your three minutes that you have to talk there, um, and then we'll make a decision from there.
And Calais, two weeks of, what's the duration of the posting of the public hearing? Is it just the two weeks? Okay.
We have to have the, we have to have it noticed for, I believe, ten days?
Oh, ten days, okay. So, it's conceivable that if that's published within the next three days-
Yes, we know we gotta get it published within the next day.
Our next meeting, we can have our public hearing.
So, we're just following the city ordinances on this, and you will, you'll be given, given time to go ahead and say what you need to say. But we've got all the information right now, so, excuse me. I appreciate you giving up, but we're gonna go ahead and move on, um, so we don't get into, into fights or battles.
Can I make a couple other small statements before, uh, real, real quick? I paid five thousand dollars for my water right. It was not a stock water right. It, it was water for necessities, cows. I've had cows there every single year. I'm in compliance with Green Belt with, with the young man who I check with. He'll put that in writing, okay? I am in compliance, period.
All right, okay, thank you so much.
And, and, and once again, nothing has been dumped anywhere, ever.
All right, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to reports. Rochelle, do you have anything to say?
I don't, since I'm just filling in.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Nothing.
Weston?
Member reports, uh, no, nothing.
Dan?
Wait.
No reports. Looks like Kelly has something. Oh, yes.
Oh, my heavens, we did. I'm just on top of it today, aren't I? Okay, well, let's go back to number six. I apologize, you guys. I had, I had writing right there. I am so sorry.
You're fired.
I'm sorry. This is Mr. Brown in the audience, I apologize.
Fired for a voluntary position?
Yeah. Okay, let's go to number six then.
Okay, I'm gonna bring up-
Kelly.
We have a request and, and I'll remind, um, not the whole, sorry, now my, my computer's experiencing a little bit of a heart attack, so let me just reboot Adobe here. Okay, um, there we go. Mr. Lee Brown, um, has, in fact, hopefully I still have the parcel. No, I don't. Um, we can, we can see it on the, on the plat that's here good enough. Mr. Brown has a, um, two parcels, um, that are located out on, uh, Old Highway Ninety-One and, what, about a thousand west? No, 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 about twelve hundred west? Eleven seventy-six west would be twelve hundred on the, on the western boundary. Um, the two parcels, um, right now, there's a, like, an orphan parcel. I would just call it an orphan parcel because I don't have a better term for it. That's not an official term. It's a, it's a long skinny parcel which is on the eastern edge of the larger parcel that, that his house sits on. So, if you, this thing, house sits right here, and this, um, small, um, non-buildable orphan parcel is, is here currently. And, I don't, you know the width of that existing parcel roughly, Lee? The width of that small parcel before adjustment? Eight feet. It's not a lar- it's not a wide parcel.
How could it have even become a parcel?
Well, there's a lot of, w- w- again, I use the term or- orphan parcel. There's a lot of orphan parcels like this in the county. Um, I'm gonna bring up the existing map so that you can see it, um, sorry, the existing parcel.
Did you get this one?
Viewer, so you can see it.
Uh-oh. Hold on to your wallet.
Here comes Dave.
He's not sitting up here, don't worry.
I don't have it, uh, where I can bring it up in front of us right now.
Okay. I had four parcels.
But I can, I'll pass it along so the, the commission can see it. Okay, so, you had four parcels, um, the parcel viewer doesn't even, isn't updated recently even to show your house, but, but Lee's house sits right here on this parcel that's here now.
Uh, my current house is the one you almost touched to the, uh, right.
Keep going.
Round roof, that's my place also.
Yeah, you own this house and then there's a new house here.
Yeah, and I just built a home there on that. And the purpose is, if you go through that line that you were on, is to just move that line over so that it now becomes the parcel line for-
There we go.
The area where the house is being built.
No, that makes sense to me. You can't do much with an eight-foot wide.
And that's all that's happening, other than I did sell that four-
It's a dog run.
I'm sorry, what?
That eight feet's a dog run, I think, isn't it?
I don't, I don't hear very well, so I'm not sure what you-
I, I don't speak very well.
So, anyways, um, what he's wanting to do, you can see that dotted line here, that's the, the existing parcel line right now. But Lee wants to r- to move that line and do a parcel boundary alignment. So, this isn't a subdivision. There's two parcels now. There will be two parcels after the alignment. Now, this is, um, this is an administrative act. Um, the reason why our code requires us to come to planning commission for approval is due to any potential effect on easements or, um, other land use, um, code or anything like that. And other than that, um, if there's two property owners, or a single property owner that owns both parcels and they wanna a, a move a parcel boundary, um, th- they are entitled to do that. Since it's not part of a platted subdivision, we don't have to amend a subdivision or, or anything like that. Um, however, I do wanna point out that as of today, this existing small skinny parcel right here is what we would call a non-buildable parcel, which means that it doesn't have any, um, entitled, um, rights like, like a water connection or- like, like a water connection or something like that. Um, and by essentially moving this line over here, you've created two parcels, one of which is now very large. Um, y- y- and, and our code would, would say that y- you wouldn't necessarily be entitling this lot with water rights just by moving a property line, right? Cause it, cause the way it's written is as of the date of that ordinance, if it was a buildable parcel, then it is grandfather to have water rights. Now, he's not asking for water rights. I'm just saying it would have to be designated as essentially a dry lot. So, if, if, if somebody were to come in and want to get a building permit for this parcel, they would have to deed the city water in order to get a building permit. Um, other than that, I don't know of any, I couldn't see that there was any easements, utility easements that would be affected by moving this, which is usually the o- the only other thing that we're looking at. Is it going to affect any roads? Is it going to affect any bi- any easements? And, and the answer is no. I can't see that it does. It just starts with two parcels and ends with two parcels.
I, I'll just say the only re- I don't need to do it at all, except that, uh, I've got a nephew that wants to buy the rest of my property, so I just built a wall around this place here and made sure that the setbacks were in accordance, uh, paid to have it all surveyed and it's going to be recorded after this meeting, hopefully. And, uh, then, uh, I guess what I'm telling you is that's all hay right now. That's all hay fields. I'm seventy-nine and I don't intend to ever see it developed while I'm alive. My nephew said he wouldn't develop it until I'm dead if, if he ever did it, so that, we're in agreement.
He's going to buy it and then shoot you.
What's that?
He's going to buy it and then shoot you.
Yeah. He might do me a favor. I've had to sit through that previous, uh, discussion you had.
I still don't understand how that was created in the first place.
I'm sorry, my bad.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Um, I, I don't see a problem moving the parcel line and just making that all into one useful parcel now.
Absolutely not.
It kind of seems silly to have a, that little dead strip right there.
Yeah, I, I, I'd still like to know how it happened in the first place.
Yeah, it just kind of doesn't make sense to me. I think this is beneficial to everyone.
It could have been some kind of survey error back a long time ago that created a property gap.
Oh, no, that, that might be, huh?
Yeah.
Interesting.
This was a county, all this property was county property and it was, it was annexed in, um, back in the day. And this is, this is pretty typical to have to clean up parcels as, as property develops. Oh, there's all kinds of weird stuff out there, Jerry, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Have you researched that strip of land to see if it ever had a tax parcel ID number or anything?
Well, it has one.
It has one.
It does. I just gave him a copy of it.
This is the tax ID right here.
Oh, my gosh.
There were four tax ID parcels.
Point one, three, six acres.
I bought all four parcels from Jeff Hunter. And then after I bought it, found out that the survey lines were messed up. So, the parcel furthest on the east, I sold to the neighbors because the parcel was in his driveway and, uh, got it all straightened out. I've spent pretty, pretty good amount, amount of money having it all resurveyed. There were utility easements, sewer lines that went through it that had never been recorded. They are now, uh, everything's straightened out.
So, it was a separate parcel when you bought it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It wa- that-
Well, there's no question about the ownership or anything.
No.
You just want to merge it with your-
Yeah, I just want to take that, that parcel line and move it over to designate my current, uh, house that I'm going to keep.
Let me point out-
That leaves my nephew enough, uh, acreage that he can keep it in Green Belt and continue to farm it.
There's times where we have a partial parcel like this dedicated for purposes of a future road. You can see that happening on one thousand.
Yeah.
But not eight.
Huh?
But that's not, there's no planned-
We talked about that many meetings ago, huh?
There's no planned road. There's nothing on our transportation master plan. Now, there is a planned road on twelve hundred west. We've dealt with that road quite a lot.
Right.
Um, and that's on the west side, but that has nothing to do with this small piece that's here. That I can see, unless this was something way happened back before all of us were in our seats. I think, uh, Councilman Burton has a-
Councilman Burton.
How wide, how wide was that?
Eight feet.
Okay. That, believe it or not, that's common for people to have had for, to have access if they, they granted somebody access to a parcel or to, so that they weren't landlocked.
You know, and the thing there is-
The parcel to the north, that would have been-
So, Ipsen to the north of him actually is technically a flag lot.
But I'm just talking years ago.
I'm saying that could have been, um, but, 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 uh, but that's not why it's there now, cause his driveway goes down that flag.
And also, when people had to go get financing, they had to show that they were not landlocked. So, sometimes this happens.
But there's no recorded easement on the parcel, right?
Nope.
Yeah, but there's no easement on the parcel.
Yeah, there's no easement, no.
If there was, it would be right there in the legal and there's nothing there.
The on- the only easement right now on the property, uh, well-
Yeah, we saw that.
Is the sewer line-
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That goes from, uh, the lane back east through my property. It's the dotted line. It goes over and gave a easement to Lions Gates because their sewer line goes down into my property and a easement to, uh, Carlsons who are now Musselman's to get their sewer line to the city. And then I had, was in a meeting a couple of years ago with you and wanted to get the city to, uh, give me credit for this sewer line.
That's what I want to ask you.
Dan says, well, no, that sewer line belongs to us, so.
Pressure.
It's, it's yours to fix if it, any problems occur.
It is. Uh, Lee, can you address this, um, weird shaped irrigation easement? Is that re- is that where the-
Well, what, what happens is Parrow and Southfield Water comes in at the top of the-
Yeah.
Of the property. And so, in preparation for transferring ownership to my nephew, I wanted to detail where the sewer line come across the top of the property, down and then back over to the lot that I, uh, have designated here as parcel, what is it, three? Or is that parcel one? I can't tell.
One, one.
But it's identified on here as a-
Parcel one. Yeah, that, what that now is just a water line that sits there.
Okay.
And Jared Burton, uh, farms this.
So, that's the canal company easement?
Yeah, well, no, it's, uh, it's my easement for my water line that I put in. The, the, uh, water company does not have a easement.
But it's not a ci- it's not for a city water line, it's for a canal company line.
It's, it's just the risers for the hay field.
Right, that's what I was getting at.
And it just designates where it's at so that in the future, should somebody want to build in there, they have to, um, make way for that water line.
No, I just wanted to, cause it's on the map, I just wanted to clarify what it was in case there was any questions.
Uh, it's actually says that it had ten-foot wide pressure irrigation easement.
Yep.
On the right hand side.
I don't see a problem.
I absolutely don't see a problem with that.
All right.
Should have been done in-
Anyone who wants to make a motion?
How do we word it? I make a motion to adjust the parcel boundary realignment for the Lee Brown property, parcels one and two.
Does that work, Cali? Yeah?